This is Sunday study session and we're gonna get right to it with the Havamall. We're gonna be reading about it and then go in and analyze and I hope you all enjoy. Like, comment, subscribe, what you want and don't forget to hit the bell notification so you know when I go live. We're gonna start with stanza one, have the eyes about thee when thou enterest. Be wary at all way, be watchful all way. For one never knoweth when need will be to meet Hildan a foe in the hall. All hail to the givers, all guest hath come, say where shall he sit? In haste is he to the hall who cometh to find a place by the fire though warmeth seeketh. Who hath wandered long and is numb about his knees. Meat and dry clothes the man needeth over the fells who hath fared. A drink needeth to full dishes who cometh, a towel and the prayer to partake. Good bearing eke to be well liked and be bidden to banquet again. On his wit hath need, who winey fareth, a dull wit who do at home. A laughing stock he, who lacketh words among smart wits when he sits. To be bright of brain, no, let no man boast, but take good heed of his tongue. The sage and silent come seldom to grief as they fare among folk in the hall. More faithful friend findest thou never than shrewd head on thy shoulders. The wary guest to wazil who comes listens that he may learn. Open his ears, cast his eyes about, as wards him the wise man against harm. Happy is he who hath won him, the love and liking of all. How hard is it one's help to seek from the mind of another man? Hope he is he who hath won him, both winning ways and wisdom. For ill-led is all who asketh help from the wit and the words of another. Better burden fairest thou now wise than shrewd a head on thy shoulders. And good stead will it stand among stranger folk and shield when unsheltered. Thou art better burden fairest thou now wise than shrewd head on thy shoulders. But with the worser food fairest thou never than an overmuch of mead. For good is not thou good is it thought mead for the sons of men and deeper he drinks. The drimmer grows, the dimmer grows, the mind of many men, the heron of heedlessness. Hoover's over the feast and still the minds of men. When the fowl's feather feathered I was, when I was Gonlud's guest. Drunk I became, that drunk forsooth, when I was with wise Fialer. The bout is best, from which back feathers fetches each man his mindful care. Oh clear, that a king's offspring be sparing in words and bold in battle. Glad and hopesome the hero be till come his dying day. Then wise man thinks that he may will live if from fighting he flees. But the ails and aches of old age dog him. Though spears have spared him, the fool begapes. When he, when to folks he comes, he mumbles and mopes. Soon is seen when his will he had, what the mind of a man is like. Only he is aware, who hath wandered much and far hath been afield. What manner of men be you whom he meets? If himself be not wanting in wit, the cup spurn not yet be sparing withal. Say what is needful or not, for ill breeding upbraids thee no man. If soon thou goest to sleep, the greedy guest gains saves his head and eats until he is ill. His belly oft makeeth a butt of a man on bench middest the sage when he sits. The herd do know when home they shall and gink from the grass to their stalls. But the unwise man will not ever learn how much his maw will hold. The ill-minded man who meanly thinks lares at both foul and fair. He does not know, as know he ought, that he is not free from flaws. The unwise man waketh all night, thinking of this and that, tosses and sleepless and is tired at morn. Nor like lighter for that is load. The unwise man weens that all who laughs with him like him too. Nor seers their ease their scorn, though they sneer at him. On bench middest the sage when he sits. The unwise man weens that all that laugh with them like him too. But when he finds, when do the thing he comes, give smokesmen to speak feed his cause. Unwise man weens, he knows all, if from harm he is far at home. But knows not ever what answer to make when others ask him off. Unwise man among others who comes, let him be sparing to speech. For no one knows that not is in him, but he opens his mouth too much. Clear is he who is keen to ask and eke to answer all men. Tis hard to eye from the hearing of men what is on everyone's lips, much at random. Oft rambles he whose tongue does ever rattle, a talker's tongue unless tame it be. Will often work him wo, no make tha- make thou of any man. Though thou comest among kinsmen, he knows, knowing weens him whom no one has asked. And dry should hice him home, a wise man he, who hides in be times from the men who likes to mock. For a table he teases can never tell what foe he might have to ma- fight. Many a man means no ill, yet teases the others at table. Thrive will ever dart among men when guest clashes with guest. An early meal a, a man should get him, let famished he come to the feast. He sits and stuffs as though starved we were and not, he says to his neighbors. To false friend a, a hour wit tis, though his roof be reared by the road. To staunch friend a, a straightway leads, though far he have fared from thee. Get thee gone bedtimes, get thee gone be times, a guest should not stay too long in one's steed. Instead, leaf grows loaf if too long one sits. On bench though, in he was bidden, one's home is best. Thou a hut it be, there a man is master and lord. Though, oh bleh, though but two goats thine and thatched roof is far better than beg. One's home is best. Thou a hut it be, there a man is master and lord. His horror doth bleed, who has to beg the meat for his every meal. From his weapons away, no one should ever stir one step on the field. Or no one knows when need might have on a sudden a man of a sword. So freehand never found I a man, but would gladly take what is given. Nor of his good so grudgingly ever to forego what is given him of his worldly goods. Which is gotten hath not a man, not stinted, stint over much. Oft is lavished on foe, but for friend was saved, for matters go often amiss. So freehand never found I a man, would gladly take what is given. Nor of his good so ungrudgingly ever to forego what is given him of his gladly goods. Which he gotten hath, let a man not stint over much. Oft is lavished on foe, what for friend was saved, nor matters go off amiss. With weapons and weeds should friends be won as soon. With weapons and weeds should friends be won as one can see in themselves. Those give to each other will a be friends once they meet halfway. When his friend a man should be friends ever and pay back gift for gift, laughter for laughter. He learned to give and eke lessons for lies. With his friend a man should be friends ever, with him and the friend of his friend, but a foeman's friend. Befriend thou never and keep thou aloof from his kin. A friend thou hast, whom faithful thou deemest and wishes to win him from thee. Op thy heart to him, nor withhold thy gifts and fare to find him often. If another there be whom I, whom all thou truest trustest. Yet wouldest get from him gain, speak fair to him. Thou fauce, thou meanest and pay him blessings for lies and eke his heads. If ill thou trust one and hollow-hearted his speech, thou shalt laugh with him and lure him on. And let him have tit for tat. Young was I once and went alone and wandering I lost my way. When a friend I found, I felt me rich. Man is cheered by man, he who giveth gladly a goodly laugh leadeth. And seldom hath thee sorrow, yeah, need to fix that. He who giveth gladly a goodly laugh leadeth and seldom hath thee sorrow. But the churlish white is cherry of all and grudgingly part of his gifts. In the fields as I fared, for fun I hung my weeds on two wooden men. They were reckoned folk, reckoned, reckoned folks? When the rags they wore, naked a man is not. The fir tree dies in the field that stands shields it nor bark nor bast. And fire hotter for five days burneth love between friends that are false. And dieth down when dawneth the six and all the sweetness turns sour. Not great things needs, give it, give to a man. Bringeth thanks oft a little things with half a loaf and half drained cup. I won me off worthy friend, a little lake hath little sand. But small the mind of man, that all men are equally wise, each white wanteth somewhat. Middling wise every man should be, beware of being too wise, happiest in life. Most likely he who knows not more than is needful. Middling wise every man should be, beware of being too wise, for wise man heart is happily seldom. If too great the wisdom he won. Middling wise every man should be, beware of being too wise. His fate let no one beforehand know who would keep his heart from care. Hanglings brand from brand and burns all till all burnt it is. Thus fire is kindled from fire, by the words of his mouth a man is known. But from his dumbness a dullard, bedtimes must arise. Who must, who would take another's life and win his wealth. Lying down wolf never got the lamb, nor sleeping white slew his fo, bow. Bedtimes must rise, who few reapers has and see to the work himself. Much will miss if the morn who sleeps, for the brisk race is half-run. What laughs and logs will last him out. A man may reckon a right and of wooden to warm him, how much he may want. For many a winter month, while groomed and washed, wind to the thing. Though thou clothes be not the best, of thou shoes and breeks be not ashamed. And still less of thy steed with lowered head sweeps. To the sea when he comes, to the eagle or the billing brine. Thus eke a man among a frog who finds but a few to befriend him. Both ask and answer, let everyone who wishes to be deemed wise, let one know it, nor none other. If three known thousands will, a wise man will not overweening be and stake too much on his strength. When the mightier met to match their strength, still be found the first is no one. Watchful and wary everyone should be, nor put too much trust in a friend. The words be won unwarily spoken have done oft a doughty man too late by far. To some feasts I come, to others all too soon, the beer was drunk or yet unbrewed. Never hits, get the hapless one right, here or there would they have me in. If no meat at the meal I craved, were hung two hams in my good friend's home after eating one of his own. A bony fire is a blessing to man and eke the sight of the sun his hearty health. If he holds it well and to live one's life without shame, all undone is no one. Though at death's door he lie, some with good sons are blessed and some with kinsmen. Nor, or with offers full and some with deeds well done. Better alive than lifeless be, to the quick all ale the cattle. There heath fire burned, for the happy hare outdoors a dead man lay. May the holt ride a horse and the handle, handle, handleless he herdsman. The deaf man may dotably fight, a blind man is better than a buried one. A, of what gain is a good man dead? To have a son is good, late God thou ye be, and born he buried his father. Don'ts see, beest thou seldom set by the roadside. But by kith raised over kinsmen, who will down one, among his head's bane. A fist I fear beneath every furry coat, of the night is fain, whose knapsack is full. Close are ship's quarters, fickle are the nights in fall. There's both fair and foul in five days' time, still more though within a month. He who knoweth nothing knoweth not. Neither our wealth may warp a man's wit, one hath wealth, one wanteth another. Though he bears no blame himself, cattle die, kinsmen die, thyself ex soon will die. Fair fame will fade never, I wean for him who wins it. Cattle die and kinsmen die, thyself ex soon will die. One thing I wot, will wither never, the doom over each one dead. A full stocked harm farm had some farmer's sons. Now they stood at the beggar's staff in a tweaking lath, growthless wealth. It is the ficklest of friends. The unwise man, once he calls all, calls his own wealth or the love of a woman. His overweening waxes, but his wit never, he oddly hardens his heart. Is readily found when the runes thou ask, made by mighty gods, known to holy hosts. And dyed deep red my oden, that tis wise to waste no words. At I, eve praise, the, at eve praise the day when burned down a torch. A wife when wedded, a weapon when tried, ice win over it, ale when it tis drunk. Bell wood in the wind and fair weather row out to sea, dallie with girls in the dark. The day's eyes are many, choose a shield for shelter, a ship for speed. A sword for keenness, a girl for kissing. By the fire drink ale, skate on the ice, buy a bony steed, a rusty blade. Feed your horse at home and your hound in his hutch. A wrench's words let no wise man trust, nor trust the truth of a woman. For one or on whirling wheel, their hearts are shaped and fickle and fightful their minds. A brittle bow, a burning fire, a gaping wolf, a grunting sow. A cracking crow, a kettleing boiling, a rising sea, a rootless tree. A flighting lying dart, foaming billow, ice one night old, it coiled up a adder. A woman's bedtalk, a broken blade, the play of clubs, a king's psychin. A stickly calf, a self-willed thrall, the smooth words of a witch, warrior's flesh slain. My brother's bainsmen, thou it be on the road, they have burned house, beady horse. Worthless thy steed if one foot he breaks. So trusting be no one so to trust in these. Early sown acres, let no, early sown acres, let none ever trust. Nor trust his sons too soon, on does weather the one, on wisdom the other. Risk not thy riches on these. The false love of a woman is like no one. Oh my gosh, I can't speak. The false love of woman is like to one, riding on ice with horse unruffed. Should a brisk two-year-old, unbroken withal or enraging wind. Drifting rudderless like the lame outrunning, the reindeer on bare rock. Read my words now, for I know them both, mains sworn are men to love. Read my words now, nor I know them both, mains sworn are men to follow. We speak most fair when most false are thoughts. For the wiles and wearest wits barely shall speak nor spare his gifts. Who will win a woman's love, shall praise the looks of the lovely maid. He who flatters will win the fair, at the loves of a man, to laugh is not meant for anyone ever. So why, why is it to fall when fools yield not to the lure of a lovely maid? Tis not meant for men to mock at what befalls many men. Oh my gosh, tis not met, tis not meat for men to mock at what befalls full many. A fair face oft makes fools of the wise by the mighty lure of love. One's self only knows what is near one's heart, each reads but himself all right. A right, no sickness seems to sound mind worse than to have lost all liking for life. Then saw I well, that saw I well, when I sat in the reeds awaiting the maid I wooed. More than bodily and soul was the sweet maid to me, yet I worked not will, not my will with her. Billings daughter on her bed I found, sleeping the sun-bright maid. A king's crown I craved not to wear if she let me have her love. At eve, at eve tide, at even tide, shalt Odin come if thou wilt win me to wife. Unmeet it were, if more than we two know of this naughty thing. Back I went to win her love, I let myself be misled. Or I did think enthralled by love, work will with her. When next I came at night-time then, all the warriors found I awake with brands high-born and burning lights. Such the luckless end of my love trust. Near morrow and I, once more did come, the folks were sound asleep. But a bitch found I, the fair one had, found fast on her bed. Many a good maid, if you mark it well, is, many a good maid, if you mark it well. Is fickle though fair her word, then I quickly found, when the cunning maid I lured to le- lecherous love. Every taunt and gib she tried on me and thought I had on her. Glad in his home, to his geist cheerful yet shrewd good one be. Wise and weighty be the word of his mouth, if wise he would be thought, in ninni is he. Who not can say, for such is the way of the witless, the old etan I sought. Now am I back in the good steeds stood me, my speech. Or with many words my wish I brought, in the hall of sutting songs. With an augur I, there ate my way through the rocks I made my room. Over and under were the etans paths, thus dared I live, thus dared I life and limbs. Gonlot gave me her good gold stool upon. A draught of the deer bought mead, in an ill reward I heard after I left. For her faithful friendship, for her heavy heart of the well-bought matter, I made good use. To the wise now, little is lacking, for othrith near. Now up is brought and one for the lord of all whites. Unharmed again, had I hardly come out of the etan's hall. If Gonlot helped me, if Gonlot helped me, the good maiden in whose loving arms I lay. The day after the etans fared into Hor's high fall. And oh, the day after the etans fared into Hor's high hall. To ask about over whether the azir among or whether I sutong slain. In oath on the ring did Odin swear, oh, put trust in his troth, sutting he swindled. He snatched his strength and Gonlot be ho, be gilded. Tis time to chant on the sage's chair, at the well of earth, I saw but said not. I saw and thought, listened to hare's lore, of runes I heard men speak unraveling them. The hall of horror, in the hall of horror, and so I heard them say. Hear thou Lord Fafnir and heed it well, learn it twill lend thee strength. Follow it twill further thee, at night rise not, but to be ready for foe. Or to look for spot to relieve thee. Hear thou Lord Fafnir and heed it well, learn it twill lend thee strength, follow it twill further thee. In a witch's arms, beware of sleeping, sneaking thy limbs with hers. He will cast her spell, that thou carest not to go, to meetings where men are gathered. Unmindful of meat, the mirthless thou goest and seekest thy bed in sorrow. Hear thou Lord Fafnir and heed it well, learn it twill lend thee strength. Follow it to, hear there, hear thou Lord Fafnir and heed it well. Learn it twill lend thee strength, follow it twill further thee. Beware lest and wedded, wife of a man, thou lur to love with thee. Hear thou Lord Fafnir and heed it well, learn it twill lend thee strength. Follow it twill further thee, on fell or firth, if to fare thee legs. Furnished thee well with food. Hear thou Lord Fafnir and heed it well, learn it twill lend thee strength, follow it twill further thee. Uphold the hardships which happened to thee. After the knowledge of narves, for now thou from naves, thou wilt never leave. Oh, thou wilt never have reward for thy good wishes. A man I saw thoroughly be stead, through a wicked woman's words. Her baleful tongue did work his bane, though good and unguiltly he was. Hear Lord, hear thou Lord Fafnir and heed it well, learn it twill lend thee strength. Follow it twill further thee, did faithful friend thou hast found for thee. Then fare thou to find him, ah, hear thou Lord Fafnir and heed it well, learn it to lend thee strength. Follow it twill further thee, if faithful friend thou hast found for thee. Then fare thou to find him full of. Overgrown is soon with tall grass and bush, the trail which is trod by no one. Hear thou Lord Fafnir and heed it well, learn it to lend thee strength, follow it twill further thee. Hey good man, seek thou to gain as thy friend and learn to make thyself loved. Hear thou Lord Fafnir and heed it well, learn it to lend thee strength, follow it twill further thee. The first be not with a friend to break, one who has faithful found to thee. For solo eateth the soul of him who may not unburden his mind. Hear thou Lord Fafnir and heed it well, learn it to lend thee strength, follow it twill further thee. Beware thou of a binding word, banding, banding words with an unwise oof. From evil man not ever wilt all, get reward for good, a good man though will gain for thee. The love and liking of many, then love is mingled when a man can say to a bosom friend that burdens him. You things are worse than fickle fine, ah, than fickle mind. No friend he who but speaks thee fair. Hear thou Lord Fafnir and heed it well, learn it to lend thee strength, follow it twill further thee. Not three words shout with a worse man bandy, oft a better man forbears when the worse man wounds thee. Hear thou Lord Fafnir and heed it well, learn it to lend thee strength, follow it twill further thee. Whether shoemaker be nor sho- sho- shaftmaker either, but it be for thyself. Ne- let the shoe be ill-shaped or the shaft not true and let, oh, and they will wish thee woo. A wo, and they will wish thee wo. Hear thou Lord Fafnir and heed it well, learn it to lend thee strength, follow it twill further thee. If wrong was done thee, let the wrong be known and fall on those, on thy foes straightway. Hear thou Lord Fafnir and heed it well, learn it to lend thee strength, follow it twill further thee. And ill deeds not ever share, but be thou good to do good. Hear thou Lord Fafnir and heed it well, learn it to lend thee strength, follow it twill further thee. Took not ever up when fighting, for mad they with fear. Men then oft grow, lest the warlocks bewitch thee. Hear thou Lord Fafnir and heed it well, learn it to lend thee strength, follow it twill further thee. If the list to gain a wo- good woman's love and all the bliss there be. Thou broth shalt pledge and truly keep, no one's, no one tires of the good he gets. Hear thou Lord Fafnir and heed it well, learn it to lend thee strength and follow it twill further thee. Hear thou Lord Fafnir, and heed it well, learn it, twill lend thee strength, and follow it, twill further thee. Be wary of thee, but not wary or much, be most wary of ale and of other man's wives. And eke thirdly, let thieves out with thee. Hear thou Lord Fafnir, and heed it well, learn it, twill lend thee strength, follow it, twill further thee. Never laugh at or mock, or make game of guest or wearing, fight. Like guest or wearing fine, wayfaring, alright. Hear thou Lord Fafnir, and heed it well, learn it, twill lend thee strength, follow it, twill further thee. Never laugh at or moke, oh my gosh, never laugh at or moke, never laugh at or mock. Or make game of guest or wayfaring white. Perfect, it only took me six times. Those who sit within hall oft hardly know of what in be they who come. No man is flawless, but some fault he is, nor so wicked to be of no worth. Both foul and fair are found among men, blended within their breasts. Hear thou Lord Fafnir, and heed it well, learn it, twill lend thee strength, learn it, twill further thee. At hoary stage, sneer thou never. There is sense often old man saws, oft wisdom cometh out of withered bag. That hangs amongst the hides, oh my gosh, that hangs amongst the hides. And dangles amongst the skins drawing, under roof with the rennet. Hear thou Lord Fafnir, and heed it well, learn it, twill lend thee strength, follow it, twill further thee. Be sure, not the stranger, nor show him the door, but rather do good to the wretched. That bar must be strong, which unbearers the doors, to each and every one, show the beggar your back. Lest bearing the grudge, ye wish you all manner of mischief. Hear thou Lord Fafnir, and heed it well, learn it, twill lend thee strength, follow it, twill further thee. When ale drunkest invoke earth's strength, for earth is good against ale, against argue fire. In straining o' corns, giant, giantist, giantest, gainest, gainst. Gainst which restial, gainst how strife the elder, gainst hate the moon. Against the rabies alum, against ill luck, ruins. For earth absorbs the humors all. I wot that I hung on the wind-tossed tree. All of knights nine wounded by spear bespoken to Oden. Bespoken myself to myself upon that tree, of which none telleth from what roots. It doth arise, neither horn they upheld, nor handed me bread. I looked below me aloud, I aloud I cried, caught up the runes. And caught them wailing, thence to the ground fell again. From the sons of Balthorn, Bestella's father, I mastered mighty songs nine. And a drink I had of the dearest mead, got from the out of Orthrothneer. All three near, O T H R A E R I R, that's how you spell it, don't know how to pronounce it. Then began I grow, and gain in insight, to wax eke and wisdom. One verse led on to another verse, one poem led on to another poem. Runes wilt thou find, and rightly read, of wondrous weight, of matchy mighty magic. Which the dyed and dread god, which they had made the holy host, and were etched by Oden. Oden among Azir for elf stain, the ball leans for the dwarfs. Ilvish among Aten's, but for the earth-born men. Wrought I some, wrought I some myself. Knowest how to write, knowest how to read, knows how to strain, how to understand. Knows how to ask, knows how to offer, knows how to supplicate, knows how to sacrifice. Tis better unasked than offered over much, for ale doth a gift look for gain. Tis better unasked than offered over much. Thus did Oden's right, er the earth, er, er, the earth began, when up he rose. And after time, those spells I know, with the spouses of kings, what not? Nor early white, help one is white, oh, help one is height, with which open thou. Be in sorrow and care with sickness. That other I know, which all will need, who leeches list to be. When the bark scratcheth them, a bull in the woods, whose bull bend to the east. That third I know, if my need be great, to fetter a foeman fail, a can dull. I can dull the swords of deadly foes, that nor wiles nor weapons avail. That fourth I know, if foemen have fettered me hand and foot, I chant a charm, the chains to break. So the fetters will fly off my feet, and off my hands the halter. The fifth I know, if from foeman's hand, I see a spear sped into throng, never so fast it flies. But its flight I can say. Oh, the fifth I know, if from foeman's hand, I see a spear sped into throng. Never so fast it flies, but it, but its flights I can stay, once my eye light. Out, alright, eat it, oh, on stains of one fifty of the Havamol. That fifth I know, if from foeman's hand, I see a spear sped into throng, never so fast it flies. But its flight I can stay, once my eye lights on it. Finally finish that stanza. The sixth I know, if me someone wounds, with runes on gnarled root written. Or rouses my wraith, be reckless speech, and belights thou blast not me. That seventh I know, if o'er sleeper's head, I behold a hall on fire. However bright the blaze, I can beat it down, a mighty spell I can speak. That eighth I know, which all to men is needful and good to know. When hatred runs high, and hurls among their strife, I can settle full soon. The ninth I know, if need there be, to guard a ship in a gale. The wind I calm, and the waves also, the holy sootheth the sea. The tenth I know, if heights hag sporting, I scan oft in the sky, I scare among with them. Well, I scare with spells, if they scattered abroad, heedless of their hides, heedless of their haunts. The eleventh I know, if I am to lead, old friends to the fray, under buckler I chant. And briskly they fare, hail and hold to battle, hail and hold from battle. Ale whenever they are. Both I know, if on tree I see, a hanged one hoisted on high. Thus I write, and runes I stain, that down the drops and tells me his tales. That thirteenth I know, if a thail suns I shall, wet with holy water, never will he fall. Though they, though the fray be hot, nor sink down wounded by a sword. The fourteenth I know, it to folk I shall, sing and say for the gods, Azir and alfs. Know I altogether, of unlearned few have I, have that lore, oh my gosh. Azir and alfs, know I altogether, of unlearned few have that allure. That know I fifteenth, which, oh, Throthneer sang. The dwarf before Delling's door, gave to Azir strength to elf's victory. By his songs and insight to Oden. That sixteenth I know, if I seek me some maid, to worry my will with her. A white-armed woman's art I bewitched, and toward me I burn her thoughts. That seventeenth I know, if the slender man's not love I have, and hold her to me. Thus I sing to her, that she hardly will leave me for other man's love. And those lore wilt thou, Lord Fafnir, be unversed, forever in a thy will word. If the wisdoms thine is helpful if heated, is helpful if known. The eighteenth I know, which to none I will tell, neither maid nor man's wife. Is best warded if by one know it, to speak it I last of my spells. But only to her, if whose arms I lie, or else to my sister also. Now our sayings here, spoken in Hor's hall, to help to the sons of men, of harm to the sons of Aten's. Hail to ever be them, oh, hail to ever spoke them, hail to ever knows them. Gain they who grasp them, happy they who heed them. And that is the sayings of the hor, which is the Havamol. Wanted to give the greatest respect, because the Havamol should not be taken lightly.